Recording in progress. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. It is Wednesday, December 6th, and we are meeting in the Jobalotta Meeting Room at Town Hall. In accordance with the requirements of the open-meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. If you wish to join our Zoom meeting, the ID number is 865-3049-4155. This meeting is broadcast live through the local access channel and on the public access Facebook page, and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open-meeting law. So if you are able, I would like you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is public comment. The school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome. Please remember, this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comments section has a maximum of 10 minutes. Comments about individual students are prohibited by state and federal law. So do we have any public comments this evening? It's not looking like we do, so we will continue on. Next on the agenda is the Chair's Report. Good evening. At our last meeting, I was taxed with writing a letter to our state legislators regarding our funding emergency. I'm going to read aloud the letter that Mr. Leighton wrote, because it was way better than the one I wrote, and we'll just see if this is what we would like to send to the legislators. "I hope this letter finds you in good health and high spirits. On behalf of the Lunenburg School Committee, I am writing to express our deep concern regarding the challenges we currently face in securing adequate funding for our schools, particularly in light of the high increases in healthcare costs and the loss of ESF funding. Lunenburg has always been committed to providing a high-quality education to our students, fostering an environment that encourages growth, innovation, and academic excellence. However, we find ourselves at a critical juncture where the financial constraints are posing a significant threat to our ability to fulfill this commitment. One of the primary challenges we're grappling with is the substantial increase in healthcare costs. The surge in medical expenses has placed an undue burden on our school budget, leaving us with limited resources to allocate toward essential educational programs and services. As you are well aware, these escalating costs are a statewide issue, and we believe that a collaborative effort is necessary to find sustainable solutions that will protect the interests of our students and educators. Additionally, the loss of ESF funding exacerbates our financial predicament. The ESF funds have played a crucial role in supporting our schools during these unprecedented times, enabling us to implement and provide additional academic and emotional supports for students who may have fallen behind. We kindly request your advocacy and support in securing continued funding for our schools and addressing the challenges posed by rising healthcare costs. We believe that a comprehensive approach involving both state and local initiatives is essential to finding a long-term solution that ensures the sustainability of our educational system. We appreciate your dedication to the well-being of our community and your tireless efforts in advocating for education. We would be grateful for the opportunity to discuss these matters further and explore potential solutions collaboratively. Our schools are the backbone of our community, and with your support, we can continue to provide a nurturing and enriching environment for our students. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to the opportunity to work together to address these pressing issues and secure a bright future for the students of Lunenburg." So I appreciate your crafting that letter, Mr. Leighton, and would it be, just informally, I don't think we have to be formal about that, would it be all right with the committee if I send that along?
Yes.
To our legislators? Okay. Then we will do that. My thank you. I also wish to thank all that participated in the tree lighting last Thursday night, and I especially wish to thank Mrs. Peterson for her organization of this event. I have received a letter from Brendan Tobin, who was president of the class of 2017. We will discuss this further down, but I told him I would read this as part of my Chair's Report, so I will do that, so it is in the record. "Hello, Mrs. Ashambo. I hope this email finds you well. I am the class president of the class of 2017 from Lunenburg High School. I was recently informed by the local paper that the school committee is exploring alternative uses for unclaimed accounts. While frustrated, this is the first I have heard about this intention, I wanted to inquire about the procedure for claiming these funds prior to them being reallocated. Upon review of policy document 3201, Student Activities Accounts, it appears that a request to the school committee must be made. Please advise on how to proceed in making this request. To my knowledge, I did not receive this information upon graduation, as indicated in the policy document. Additionally, a prior email conversation I had with Mrs. Peterson in 2020 indicated that these funds would remain available for the discretionary use of the class for activities such as reunions, subject to school committee approval. Thank you in advance for your assistance in proceeding with this request. Best regards, Brendan Tobin." So we will take this up further at the end of the meeting, but towards the middle of the meeting, actually, but Mrs. Peterson is working with him on this request. Okay, and that's what I have. Now I have moved my agenda out of the way. Next, we have the review and approval of minutes for our special meeting, which was November 8th. Did anyone have any questions about those minutes? Seeing none, then do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of November 8th.
A second?
Second.
All righty. Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Then those minutes are approved. This week, from the 14th of November to December 4th, there have been warrants in the amount of $206,275.16. These have been signed. Does anyone have any questions relating to any of these warrants?
I just have a request. Could we, and I know that there was a link to where these warrants or the notice associated with the warrants that was posted in the folders previously. As I was going back trying to align the warrant to our folder that's shared for every meeting, it wasn't there.
Okay.
So if we could, I believe they're being kept in a centralized folder, but if we could include a link, just, I'm dealing with bookmark and link madness between my real job and this job, so.
Sure thing.
If we could just include it in the meeting folder, I would appreciate it.
We can do that? Mm-hmm. All right, then. Then on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I have an update for you regarding administration staffing. Mrs. Whitmore, our newly-appointed Director of Administration and Finance, will begin with us on February 12th. Additionally, Mrs. Shanina Burns will be our new Assistant Principal at the Lunenburg High School. Mrs. Burns is currently the physical education teacher at the Lunenburg Primary School. Before coming to the Lunenburg Schools, she was a department head and a member of the leadership team at Fitchburg High School. Mrs. Burns also has experience as a varsity coach at the high school level. She holds a master's degree in curriculum and teaching from Fitchburg State University and is enrolled in a CAGS program, in the Educational Leadership Program at Fitchburg State as well. Mrs. Burns' experience working with the high school population, coupled with her leadership experience in education, is what made her the top choice of the hiring committee. She will assume her new role at the high school when we return from the December break on January 2nd. Between now and then, we will be arranging several opportunities for her to be at the high school in order to meet and interact with students, faculty, and parents. Few words regarding school security. We did hold a SaferWatch informational session for parents at the middle high school on Monday evening. We had two parents attend, and Officer Mackenameric was able to answer questions and give them some individualized attention relative to download of the app. We will be holding meetings with students at the middle high school level to introduce the app to them as well and discuss how to appropriately use the app in the coming days. The district safety team will plan a test of the new app at some point later this winter or early spring. We will certainly communicate out that a test of that app is scheduled. Additionally, you may have seen a recent story on some of the Boston news channels regarding an FBI alert to local police regarding school security measures. At the request of the FBI, the Mass Association of School Superintendents relayed that alert to superintendents to make them aware that there had been a few incidents in recent weeks where unauthorized individuals gained access to schools. I did alert our district and school administrators, secretaries, and custodians, and asked that they be very attentive to our safety and security protocols. We have had no similar incidents in Lunenburg. There is a possible interest in some of our school materials. A resident in town has been interested in locating old photos from the TC Passios Elementary School. These old photos and other materials, such as records relating to a building committee process and school designs from the late 1950s or early 1960s, are of interest and now have become an interest of the Lunenburg Historical Society. I have advised the interested individuals that the school committee will have to vote to relinquish these materials to the Historical Society. We will put this on a future agenda for discussion and vote. However, I would like to invite the members of the school committee to review these materials prior to any vote. They have all been gathered together, and they are currently being securely held in my office, awaiting your review. I would be happy to get you a cup of tea or a cup of coffee as you peruse the materials that are waiting for you. A few December reminders. The Lunenburg Public Schools Secretaries' Annual Gift Card Drive ends this Friday. We recently sent out another appeal, hoping that folks will participate, as we have in prior years, we've had a very good response. So the basketball boosters are running their craft fair this Saturday at the middle high school cafeteria from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Our next school committee meeting will be on December 20th, starting at 6:30 p.m. from the middle school collaboration room. That will be via Zoom. Schools are closed the week of December 25th for the winter break. Schools will reopen Tuesday, January 2nd, and I would just want for everyone to be aware that there are many of our 12-month, year-round staff who opt to take some vacation time during this particular school vacation break, so our offices, our school offices, will be closed during this break as well. There are a few other dates coming up, events at the middle high school, but I don't want to steal the thunder of our student report, so I will end there, with the exception, one more comment, that we are beginning the holiday season. Hanukkah is upon us, so I would just like to wish a happy Hanukkah to all those in our community that would be celebrating. I'll turn it back to you.
All righty. Then I will turn it over to our student representative.
Thank you. All the students are looking forward to winter break, which is right around the corner. For the primary school, things are quiet but are going well at the primary school. The primary school officially has apparel for sale. For Turkey Hill Elementary School, the girls on the run won a 5K race. For Lunenburg Middle High School, Emma Beruschian, who has been nominated as Lunenburg Middle School Representative for Project 351. D.C. registrations are still open. For Lunenburg High School, the Lunenburg Student Council is hosting a gift-wrapping service, which is sometime next week. There's a winter semi-formal on the 16th, and winter sports are starting to kick off. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, it's going to be a very busy week. Concert on the 14th, concert on the 15th, semi-formal on the 16th. Very, very, very busy.
As it should be.
Mm-hmm. All good things.
All good things. So now we go to new business, and we have the initial Spain trip approval.
So Ms. Radford is here with us this evening. She's the one bringing this field trip forward, so I'll turn it over to her. Would you like the ability to share the screen?
Yes, actually, that would be probably easier than having you do it and clicking through my slides. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me at this meeting tonight and fitting me in. Am I now able to share? I am. Excellent. All right. And did that go through okay for everybody?
Yes.
Looks like we're good. Okay. All right. And I think it'll let me do it and make it really big. Maybe not. Okay. So I am putting forward a proposal this evening for a cultural journey to Spain. This is my first time planning a trip and coming before school committee with this information, so if there's any additional information that you need or questions you have, please let me know. So I had approached Mr. Santri earlier this year to get his approval for planning the trip, which he had no problem giving to me, and I vetted four different companies for this trip. The two main things I was concerned with for the initial planning were the cost to families and the cultural opportunities that we could provide to students. I do intend for this trip to be open to all students, who are students at Lunenburg High School during the 2024-25 school year, but there will be extra gems, I think, involved in the trip for students that are students who study Spanish or who speak Spanish fluently. That is by no means a requirement for anybody attending the trip. So I did put some slides together. The proposed dates for the trip are April 18th to the 26th, 2025. The trip does leave on a Friday. It is the Friday prior to April vacation. The current plan is that we would depart in the evening, so in theory, students should not need to miss school at all to attend the trip. And it's very important to me, being an experienced traveler, that we return on Saturday and kind of have that Sunday as time at home to sort of reacclimate to being back before we jump back into school on Monday. The trip would be open to adult guardians of any students who are participating as well, and chaperones would be coming from Lunenburg Middle High School staff members primarily, or exclusively. I don't foresee an issue where we couldn't fully staff our chaperones from our building. So the company we're traveling with, we would be traveling with is Walking Tree Travel, and this is a company that has a specific focus on cultural opportunity. So we want all of our kids to have great tourism experiences. I personally believe in student travel as something that can change kids' lives, and I know that it's expensive, and I, as a student myself, years and years ago, my family saved and saved to send me on a trip, but it was absolutely a life-changing experience for me to get out of my community and be able to do that. And I do want to mention, because I think it's important, that during the open house and parent conference times this year, I've had seven parents ask, seven different families ask me about student travel, so this is definitely something that families are looking for for their kids. The company, Walking Tree, relies on a lot of local staff in Spain to be part of the trip with us, so there, I think, is extra support built in, in addition to just having a tour manager, which was something that really appealed to me. The cost of the trip is also something that is different with this company. They bill the flight separately from the tuition of the program. So what this means for families is that there is an initial deposit to sign up for the trip, and then there are monthly payments that are made towards the program tuition, which is $3,190. However, the flights are estimated until they have actual figures, and the reason that they do this is just because flight prices fluctuate so much, and it's quite possible that they would come in underestimate for this trip. So the flights would be booked, I think, probably six or seven months prior to departure on the trip, and then families won't even be billed for the flight component until 70 days before the trip leaves. So there's lots and lots of notice for that, but it lowers the monthly payment leading up to that time, which I thought was a wonderful way to do business with a trip, and the itinerary is $400 less than the next best quote, which I bought, and it was much more able to be, like, I could pick all the places that I wanted to go, which was great. So I'm going to show you the types of places that the students would be able to visit. So we would start in Barcelona and go to Figueires. Barcelona is a favorite, absolute favorite destination for students who go to Spain. All of the items that are in here, Parque Wells, Sagrada Familia, which was just in the news because they just got the lights turned on and their towers. We added the Dalí Museum. This was a special request of mine because Salvador Dalí is so popular with students. The building itself is actually a piece of art. There is also the marketplace at Las Tramas, where students like to go shopping, so this is an inclusion, I think, on any Spain trip, you have to include Barcelona. And we would have about three and a half days there. So from Barcelona and Figueires, we'd be traveling to Valencia. It's a beautiful area. The funky-looking building you have in the picture is the City of Arts and Sciences. It is an enormous complex that houses planetarium, science museum, botanic garden, oceanographic stuff, so there's just a lot to interest different students, and with the way that we have multiple staff members, we can kind of break them into small groups, and students could explore something that interests them the most. You need some downtime at the beach, and I firmly believe you need downtime in the trip, and if any of you have been on a trip where it's go-go-go all the time, I think you know what I mean. So that is Valencia. And then we would be taking a train trip, which is a great way to travel through Europe and something that students, I think, don't really experience in the U.S., through the region of Andalusia, and we'd be going to Granada. So the images you have in the slides are the old city of Alguacín, which is a UNESCO World Heritage Site, also the fortress of the Alhambra, which is an Islamic fortress. And then there are some of those cultural gems. There's a Moroccan teahouse that we'd be visiting. There's a flamenco dancing experience. It's a demonstration. That's actually in a cave, and then students can participate if they want to. It's obviously a very important part of Spanish culture, is all forms of dance, so this would be a unique experience, I think. And then we'd be moving on to Sevilla for the end of the trip. There's a cooking lesson there, so something that would appeal. We do that with our students. We do cooking and following recipes and authentic food, so they'd be experiencing and preparing a lot of that. We have a private tour of an organic olive oil farm, which, again, we're meeting local people and getting to do things that are kind of off that museum beaten path. We would be visiting the Seville Cathedral, which is a UNESCO World Heritage Site, and taking a cruise on the Guadalquivir River, which is also something that typically appeals to students. We do love the river cruises on our European trips. So I have some more information here. I know the school committee had received the slides ahead of time, but I just want to highlight two things, that the price is fully inclusive, so the absolute only things that are not part of the price for this trip are students' individual spending money for souvenirs and snacks, and the coach travel to and from the airport that we would be taking from Lunenburg Middle High School. So all of the meals are included, all of the hotels, all of the gratuities, all the travel, all the entries, everything. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention is that this is a guaranteed private tour, so we will have a minimum of 12 students or adult participants to run the trip, and then after that, the trip runs automatically, and we are guaranteed to not be mixed in with another student group, which was something else that was important to me when I was looking at all our options. So I think that's, and I'm going to stop sharing, and I will take any questions that you might have.
Certainly. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? Mrs. Brzezowski?
Hi. Thanks. I have a few questions. Have we worked with Walking Tree Travel before?
We are working with them currently for the trip that's going to Costa Rica in April of 2024.
Okay. Does the trip to Costa Rica, is that the same deal with the flight price increases, with the flight price being separate from the price?
Yes, that's how that trip is running. That's how they run all their trips, to my knowledge.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we, our families, actually, that airfare was secured, I think, at the beginning of October, and then families were notified of what the exact amount would be. The payment for that would be happening in February for an April trip, and 30 days prior, the company is in direct contact with families to just remind them that that's coming up and also give them a chance to change their payment method if they need to do that.
Okay. Was the Costa Rica trip, were the flights close to what they had been quoted?
Yes, they were. I think it was a $40 difference.
Okay, because if flight prices increased dramatically, are parents, are families stuck paying a drastic increase?
Yes, but I think over the last five or six years, the flight prices to and from, with the COVID exception, we actually estimated a little high on this. They had originally put a $700 estimate, and I asked them to raise it to $800, just in case, you know, there was something like that that was a little bit off. In comparison with the other countries, the other companies do is they just estimate high, and we pay that regardless, because it's lumped into the same cost of the trip.
Okay. And I love the train trip part of it. I love your enthusiasm, and I love the travel experience you bring to this.
Thank you.
The transportation from Barcelona to Valencia, how are they getting from Barcelona?
That's a motor, that's a motor coach trip. That's a bus. So whenever we're not traveling by train, it is always a private motor coach to and from the places that we're traveling. Occasionally, there's subway travel within a city, but when we're going from one main location to the next, it's either a private coach or a train.
Okay. And are the, are the flights into Barcelona and out of Seville or Sevilla?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the option was to leave Sevilla, go to Madrid and fly home from Madrid, but that's a five-and-a-half-hour bus ride, and then an eight-hour plane flight there. I said, hmm, can we just leave from Seville? Which was the other reason that we raised the price from 700 to 800 for that estimated airfare. So we will be flying direct into Barcelona and then flying home from Seville. There'll be a layover in Madrid, but it's much quicker than taking the bus all the way up there.
Okay. Thank you. Sounds, and I really appreciate the ida cost.
Thank you.
Mr. Beardmore?
A couple of questions and some comments.
Sure.
So first of all, Ms. Bradford, thank you very much. I think you put together, really, a wonderful itinerary, and I've been to some of these places, and I think it's, I'm impressed with this itinerary. And for what it's worth, earlier today, I went on Google to price, it wouldn't show me prices for 2025, but I priced same week 2024. And me prices for 2025, but I priced same week 2024 and showed $600 round-trip airfare on a couple of, on a couple of airlines with one connection into Barcelona. So I think that, you know, I agree with the estimation, the theory of how you estimated this. So I do have a question on the timeline. Obviously, this is a full 16 months before this trip. What is the timeline in terms of how this gets marketed to students, when they need to commit, and then, you know, begin making monthly payments?
So that's a great question, and I'm glad that you asked that because that's something else that's unique with Walking Tree. There really is no official deadline that the company sets for when students need to be registered by. So if this trip is approved preliminarily this evening, we would start advertising to students tomorrow and handing out information to families. And then there is a page already filled with Walking Tree that would be released for families to access information. So the initial deposit for the trip would be made, and then the payments are divided into monthly payments. And on that pre-enrollment page that you would arrive at when you scan the code on our poster, it will tell you what the monthly payment will be. And that amount changes slightly every day or every week as we get forward. So if families that sign up next week and give their deposit are going to have a lower monthly payment than families who sign up in April or May are going to have because they've waited longer. So, you know, there's more money packed into the monthly payment. I would prefer to cut off all registration for the trip at the end of this school year. It's possible that we would waitlist students at that time, and that's only because by the time the fall school year starts, Walking Tree is going to be having their flight departments start looking for those flight prices. And once we've secured the seats on the plane, we're not going to be adding any more students to the trip. So we want to allow them to get in there as early as possible in order to do that. Families could sign up, you know, in June and pay whatever the amount is then, that would be a problem.
So thank you very much for that answer. And as I said, my enthusiasm for the itinerary notwithstanding, nor notwithstanding the fact that I personally benefited from two such school trips, one to Greece and Italy in 1989 and one to Montreal in 1990, which was led by Mrs. Arshinbo's husband. I think you've done a great job here, and so what I'm about to say is no reflection on you whatsoever. This is not about you. I suspect that this is going to pass tonight. I am going to vote no. And my reason for voting no relates to comments that I have made as multiple trips have been brought before us over the course of the last 15 or 16 months that I've been a member of the school committee and have asked questions about our approach to these trips as it relates to equity and students' and families' ability to pay and participate in these trips, and how we rationalize that relative to everything else that we say in all of our important documents about equity. And I've projected this for some time and have not received either evidence of work that's been done to figure this out, to mitigate it, to rationalize it. It just, it just does not square in my head yet. It may at some point. I'm maintaining an open mind, but at this point, I'm not there, and I've just said it too many times. And I feel like, at this point, I need to say, until I can square it in my head, I'm a no. And so for that reason, I will vote no on this particular one tonight. As I said, I think it will pass, but I, I'm also very sensitive to the work that you've done, Ms. Bradford, on this. And I, again, I don't intend for this to reflect on you in any way whatsoever. I think you have done and are doing an excellent job. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Any other comments from the committee? Mr. Leighton.
Yeah, I want to thank you for organizing this for the students, and I also appreciate that you allowed students to not miss a lot of school time, as well as staff. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
My comment would be that I support what Mr. Beardmore is saying in that we have talked a lot about kids who can't afford it. Mr. Beardmore went on two of those trips as a kid. I was the kid whose German class went to Germany, but I didn't because there was no money. However, as far as I know, we have no policy stating that that was an expectation. So I will vote yes, and I would also ask our policy committee to take a look at how do we deal with this? You know, how do you be a junior at Lunenburg High School and know, my friends all get to go, but I don't because, like, I have to work and my money goes to feed my family? You know, it's a really tough issue. Once again, no reflection on anything you've done. This sounds wonderful, and this is on my husband and my agenda in the next few years, and I may just keep these slides. So I know where to go. But, but I, it is something that is difficult for us to weigh. These are wonderful opportunities for kids, and we want them to be able, all of them, to be able to take advantage of them.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Then I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that the school committee approve the proposed Spain trip.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All righty. Good luck with your planning.
Thank you very much. Please be in touch with you when you're ready to go to Spain. I'd be happy to talk to you.
All righty, thank you.
Can we do a school committee trip to Spain?
That I would support.
Next, and to new businesses, donations.
We have several this evening. At the high school, we have a donation from Bright Funds. These checks are a donation for the high school from an employer of one of our students' This Bright Funds is a charitable giving platform that helps individuals and companies support the causes that they're passionate about. The total amount of this donation is $656.41. And again, that would go into the gift account. And we have a donation in the amount of $267 from Hannahford Helps. That donation will be deposited into the gift account at Turkey Hill Elementary School. We have another donation in the amount of $1,500 from the PTO that will also be deposited into the gift account at Turkey Hill Elementary School. And another $1,500 check from the Lunenburg PTO for deposit in the Student Activities account for funding future field trips. That's at the primary school.
Fortunate we are to have all these donations and people willing to raise money for our activities and students. Do I have a motion to accept these donations?
I'll make a motion to accept these donations with gratitude.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that. So we're going on to discussion topics. The first one is the winter sport report.
You have received a report from the athletic director, Mr. Bigelow, relative to participation numbers in all of our winter sports.
Does anybody have any comments or questions about the sport participation?
What I'm about to say, I have already expressed directly to Mr. Bigelow, who I believe, by the way, is doing an outstanding job. And I think we are extremely well-served by him and the team that he has put together. We have some sports that are doing, you know, amazingly well from a numbers perspective and some sports that are low numbers but are, don't require high numbers to run a program, such as cross-country, you know? And I think we want to be able to offer a multitude of programs that serve the needs of, you know, the great diversity that we have in terms of the athletic abilities that our students have. I'm very concerned about the numbers in our football program, and I'm concerned that we are reaching a point where we may not be able to safely run a program. And I have personally inquired of Mr. Bigelow to begin to inquire if we may need to begin to look at co-opping with another school, such as we do with hockey. And I don't know that that's an urgent 2024 issue, but the numbers are not trending in a positive direction, and I would like to see us begin to explore that.
It can't hurt to explore what the options would be, and it does look like the numbers are going down. Not knowing a great deal about how many kids it needs to run a football team, my information is limited to, I know there's 11 on each side.
Well, that's a start.
So I am not a football expert, but it can't hurt to look into it. Are there any, the other thing would be, what would be the possible reason for that? Are parents concerned about the head injury piece? Because we have talked about that.
Yes, I mean, the answer to that is yes. And it's something I happen to know quite a bit about and have some experience in, as well as, you know, direct experience with our program. This is not a problem or an issue that is unique to Lunenburg. This is a, this is a national trend that is happening right now. And, you know, in larger schools where you would have, you know, over 100 kids who previously would have been seeking to participate in a program, and you might have 50 or 60, you can still scale to be able to run adequate JV and varsity programs. We don't scale because of the size of our system. I don't think we're trending, you know, substantially below average in terms of participation relative to the size of our school. It's just we're, we're reaching a scalability challenge here. And it is what it is. I mean, I'm a, obviously, I'm a big believer and supporter of football, fully cognizant of the risks involved. But those are, you know, personal decisions that families need to make, and the, you know, the popular opinion is different today than it was 20 or 30 years ago.
Certainly.
And it is what it is, you know?
Okay, thank you for the comment. Anything else, Mr. Schoolenbrunnen?
So one of the questions that I have is, do we have any, do we have any direct feedback about the reasons for the decrease? Like, if it is head injury-related, is that because we know parents have said that or because we've seen a decline in participation after a student suffers a particularly bad head injury? Like, what, what are we using as benchmarks to say that's the cause?
I don't think any of us is saying that's the cause.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, nor am I direct. I do think it contributes.
Oh, hey, I totally agree. I mean, the news has been terrible.
But I think that the terrible news has not been exclusive to football either.
It's been bad for a bunch of sports.
But amongst other reasons are, there are more options. You know, not only just in season in the fall, but more options throughout the year. There's a much greater degree and encouragement in specialization for students today. You know, when we were kids, it was, you know, we were all inquired to play three or four sports, right? Nowadays, if a kid excels in a particular sport, they are strongly encouraged to specialize so that they can be competitive and go to college on a scholarship or you name it. And I think that that contributes as well. You know, a kid who may have gravitated toward football because it was a physical sport that they wanted to play, you know, 10 years ago, before we had rugby in the spring, and they only had the time or energy or money to play one sport, that was their option, now there's rugby. You know, like, I think there are a lot of contributing factors here, and I'm not, by no means, an expert on it. It's just from my experience and talking with parents and understanding what else is going on. There's also, by the way, a lot of recruitment of athletes from our school to other schools. Our football program lost three players who would be juniors and seniors, juniors and seniors this year that are playing, that played this year for Lemonster and Gardner. One was a Gardner resident who was school-choiced into Lunenburg. The other two, I believe, were Lunenburg residents who school-choiced into Lemonster. You know, I don't know the legalities of the recruitment or how that works, but, you know, we are, and all three were outstanding athletes. So, you know, that is happening and affecting, I believe, all of our programs, but I've personally seen it in football.
So the second question I have is, is this something that we need to do something about? Like, is the school committee, like, okay, there you go. Thank you.
I don't think so. This is something the athletic director would have to deal with.
It's a request, is how I, is how, and I, what I'm, I want to be on the record publicly that I've made the request. I personally made it to the A.D., and, by the way, I think our options may be limited. But I think we need to explore this, given the situation.
Is there a minimum team size?
I mean, 11, you know? Doesn't give you a whole lot of depth.
After, yeah.
So how many do we have now?
Somebody gets hurt.
We only have 32.
Yeah, and six of them are eighth graders, you know? I mean, so, Jesus, so.
Yeah, there's more, there's more participant in the girls' soccer program than there is the football program. There's almost as many participants in field hockey. It is nice, there's so many girls' sports being represented here, though.
I would agree.
Yes.
Like, the soccer program, there's 38 girls. That's, that's big. That's wonderful.
Mitch.
This just.
Mr. Leighton?
Yeah, I think oftentimes, sports can go in and out of phases, too. I think we saw it even, too, with the golf team in 2022. They had small numbers. Sometimes it's just the certain grades. I even looked at the football data, seeing that there was only one freshman student this past year, too. So I think there's some outliers there, too, that can skew the data. But big picture, I think this is what the athletic director does, and I would leave it up to him to make those decisions. And we've seen even before, I think, the tennis was doing a co-op with Fitchburg. I think that's the kind of things that we can trust that the athletic director will bring forward to us.
I would agree. Okay, then we thank Mr. Bigelow for his report here, and we will go on. Next on the agenda is the Parker Essential Charter School report.
You have a copy of the report. This is an annual report that's provided to all those communities that have students at the school.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about the Parker report?
My only question is, why do we receive this?
Because you have to. It's required.
So are we receiving it, are we required to receive it because we fund students that go there?
We have students that would be in attendance. Yep. Typically, typically, we bring forward reports annually from Sizer School and the Parker.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, then we will move on to capital planning. And I think I will.
Dr. Burnham, do you want to address that? Or do you want me to go to the capital planning guy?
We can turn it over to the capital planning guy.
All right, Mr. Beadmore.
Okay. So, three weeks ago now, Dr. Burnham and Mrs. Archenbo came and presented the capital plan, the proposed capital plan, to the Capital Planning Committee. And there are very good discussions came out of that. And the Capital Planning Committee has met twice since then. One to hear facilities proposals, and then we met this past Wednesday to begin reviewing all of the proposed projects, having sort of a free-form discussion about the merits of the projects, just to get an idea of where the other committee members were feeling about things and whether things needed more information, or what have you. And the ranking process will begin a week from Monday. So we are not meeting next week, but we'll meet both Monday and Wednesday of the following week, which I believe are the 20, I don't know the dates off the top of my head, but not next Monday and Wednesday, but the 18th and 20th, the following week. So, the biggest issue that arose was it, the members were not really clear around why we needed, for example, detailed engineering plans for the windows at Turkey Hill Elementary School to go and apply for an accelerated repair program, but not detailed engineering plans and only an assessment and schematic design to go for potentially a core program for a renovation of the whole school, which, if you recall, we're asking for, not because we're looking to renovate in the near term, but because we, while we may leverage that information, we have more immediate needs for that information from an analytical municipal building planning perspective. And so the next morning, I called the superintendent and asked that we provide some information to the Capital Planning Committee that kind of shakes it out and provide specific requirements for what is needed by the MSBA for different kinds of programs. And that began a two-week odyssey of ambiguity, I guess is probably the best way to put it. And what has come to pass is, number one, what we thought to be true in some cases relating to, for example, what exactly is needed? Do we need a detailed engineering plan for the accelerated repair program or not? As well as, what is the commitment around continuing to use the building as a result of using the accelerated repair program? Or the core program, for that matter? And what appears to be the case, without clear written confirmation, is that detailed design plans are not needed for the accelerated repair program. However, what we thought to be a 10-year commitment is actually for the expected lifespan of the repair. So, for example, where we thought that we were looking at 10 years for a roof or windows or a boiler, in fact, it could be considerably more than that if you look at, you know, what is the expected lifespan? And there are some, but there are no details in terms of what are the expected lifespans for these classifications of products. So I've begun doing the research, for example, of like, when a business goes and repairs windows, what is the amortization schedule? Or, you know, just trying to look for some kind of information there. Suffice to say, we are caught in a bit of a, quite a bit of ambiguity, quite a bit of fog in terms of the details that are needed to be able to advance a request like this. So there's some good news and some bad news, mostly bad, associated with this. I think that the bad news is, and by the way, I've been very transparent with the Capital Planning Committee as we've gone through this, understanding that we have not been able to meet to discuss this. I think the Capital Planning Committee understands that, number one, the request for the Turkey Hill window engineering is substantially more than what's needed, and either that needs to get pared down or eliminated. But as it currently stands, I don't think it's going to get sufficient support. The good news is, is that I don't think as much is needed to even necessarily go forth and still submit a letter of interest come February, when the LOIs are due. On other topics, I think, you know, the committee has been very positive in terms of the rationale around the broader assessment and schematic design for Turkey Hill and understands the rationale. There's still quite a bit of skepticism around the window film. And, you know, not substantial discussion on most of the other topics. I had a follow-on discussion earlier this week with Dr. Burnham and Mrs. Archenbo, just trying to sort out some of the MSBA issues. And I have to tell you that I was extremely frustrated with our experience with the MSBA. I don't think that they're particularly responsive. I think that they communicate intended changes before they're actually written into policy or any kind of documentation, and that creates quite a bit of confusion. And when you're a small municipality that's trying to operate on an annual planning calendar that includes capital planning and town meeting budgeting and those kinds of things, the timelines are often askew and are just, it makes it exceptionally difficult to be able to proceed with this kind of thing. And I do think that we need to endure some sort of communication, similar to what we have just done with the legislators, to the MSBA requesting clarity specifically around what is and isn't required, and anything that isn't known, when exactly, time and date-specific, we are going to know, and to communicate some of our frustration with respect to using available information to be able to do strategic planning with our community. So I would ask that as, you know, something that we look at and perhaps a future agenda item. But, you know, where we stand right now is, I don't think that, given the limited information we have right now, the accelerated repair program with the MSBA is something that we'll be able to count on in the near term.
I would agree with your assessment. And I also want to thank you, because I did watch the last meeting, and I think you did a really good job of conveying what had gone on. And nobody could say anything, because like, what can you say? It is what it is. But very difficult, for sure. The rest of the items, they seem to have a grasp of in general, so.
Yeah, you know, as I said, everything else is fairly straightforward. You know, we engaged in a conversation a couple of times around playground equipment, and that's very similar to the conversation that we had about, you know, the primary school issues. You know, the merits of Phase II of the AC and those kinds of, I mean, that's all pretty well-understood. I think, you know, as I said a month or so ago, the CPC is going to do what the CPC does, and it's going to, you know, weigh these against other requests, and some of them will get funded and some of them won't. You know, I think my job is to make the best case possible. I'm obviously very frustrated with what I think is a need around windows at Turkey Hill in particular, and, you know, just running into glass panes, figuratively and literally.
For sure. Mr. Schoolenbrunnen?
Just a thought. Does a school district around us have experience using the MSBA funds that we could consult with? I mean, because it seems like what's happening is we're caught in this recursive loop, where every time we have like a specific project, we have to figure out whether or not we're going to trigger all of these obligations. And then we also have to figure out whether or not the obligations line up with our plan for that building, and we just get stuck over and over again. Like, somebody's got to have built something.
People have built things, but the rules have changed, like now. Because, unless I'm wrong.
So, I just, I think I need to provide some clarity first. Back to the schematics. Just for anybody who might be watching that didn't watch capital planning and hasn't been part and parcel of trying to uncover all of this. To be clear, to do the windows as an accelerated repair project, we will have to have schematics. We don't have to have them before we submit a letter of intent to MSBA. That's, I just want to be clear about that. Because I can see myself at a Capital Planning Committee a year from now saying, "But you said that we didn't need to have them." Well, we do need to have them. And they will, everybody's going to have to sign off on moving forward with these projects and funding. And, but so that they don't get the question a year from now, we absolutely will have to have schematics. We don't have to have them prior to requesting to be considered for a project. Relative to, are there other people we can consult with? And things have changed, and so on and so forth. The general overarching guide for MSBA and what they do and their process is very clear as a process to them. If we were to communicate with them, they would come and they would tell you, "But these are all, this is how it works." The challenge is in the nuance of what is your context? Your community context? The politics of your community? The municipal form of government and the processes and timelines there? So, yes, they post a list of communities that have been approved in recent years for projects. I worked in Wilmington Public Schools when we did an accelerated repair project for doors and windows, and it's listed there. The context in Wilmington at that time is not going to be helpful to us in terms of reaching out to them, how does this work? Because our context in Lunenburg and how processes work here and our boards and the dynamic of the discourse here are very different, community to community. I attended a webinar that was put together by the Mass Association of School Superintendents with a focus on MSBA in the process. And it was the executive director of the MSBA who presented. And, I guess, sort of co-presented with a superintendent from Holyoke. So not truly a superintendent, because they've been in receivership. Again, very different dynamic, but he talked about how long it took to get across the finish line with a project that was actually approved through MSBA. And that's because, as you go through the project, not unlike what we've just done, people ask the questions, you get more information, and then things start to morph. Okay, let's go back and look at this again. So they initially thought they were looking to get one project done, and then, having gone through some iteration of that, pulled back, took in all that they had encountered along that process, and then started rethinking things, and then came back with a different project, a different approach, and got it across the finish line. So, yes, I mean, I can talk to other superintendents from other communities that have done other projects, but what was their context at that time when they did the project could be very, very different from the challenges that we're facing in this moment, here in this district, at this time? Because our Turkey Hill building could be very different than what they were looking to accomplish with whatever they were looking to fund through a project in their community. So it's tricky, it's complicated, it's not cookie cutter, there's no one right way. Yes, there's a process. And MSBA will tell you, as, you know, the woman during the webinar said, there is a process. After you submit this letter of intent, they are going to come and they are going to look at things. They're going to want information, they're going to want data, they're going to make site visits, so on and so forth. And they will tell you what more they need from you. And they may offer you some counsel at that time. So I'm sure that if we were to communicate to MSBA, they would say, "But we will help you through the process." The frustration that I have and that I think we have and discussed about this, it's difficult to go forward with a 10-year capital plan and map out each year of the 10 years where we're going to do projects and what is going to be eligible for MSBA funding when year to year, they decide what kinds of projects are going to be eligible? Previous years would have been boiler replacements, window replacements, roof replacements. Then there were a few years, because of all of the inflationary costs, they stopped the accelerated repair program. Now they're back up. But they are not going to be entertaining in this next cycle that will be announced in January. They will not be entertaining boiler replacements because it looks as though they're going to be making a commitment to moving away from fossil fuels. They are undertaking a study, and they're exploring heat pump systems. Mini splits. And there's a possibility, cycle after this one, they may now include reimbursement for heat pump to replace boilers. We couldn't have known that five years ago when we were looking at the 10-year plan and mapping all of that out. That, to me, is where the source of frustration comes in, because we can't, we can't map something out that's solid for even a five-year window of time, because they only make their decisions each year just before they're opening the next cycle. The amount of reimbursement is calculated annually when they open the cycle. The superintendent on the webinar the other day said that one of the things that he learned was that, you know, they'll say it's X percent. But the thing that people don't hear and what doesn't stick of allowable costs. So here's your total cost, and we're only reimbursing this percent. But you said it was going to be this percent. It is that percent of the allowable cost. But when you calculate that, the total percent of reimbursement of the project is now this. So the communication and making sure that people are paying attention to the detail and not just the, "Oh, I heard, but you said it was 80%." Yes, of the allowable cost. So it's complicated, it is frustrating. But I do think that if we were to communicate to MSBA, they'd say, "Yes, but this is the process. This is what it is, and this is how it's regulated. And we don't make things up as we go along." The process is the process. But part of the process is that annually, they decide what projects are going to be allowable. And annually, they decide what the reimbursement rate is going to be. And annually, they can decide to pay. And annually, they can decide to pare down, because they got way too many requests for funding. Okay, well, we said we were gonna entertain this, but now, because we got so many, we're only gonna entertain this." So, on this end of things, it's really frustrating and it's clear as mud. And on their end of things, it's very clear. I have no doubt, in their mind, how they approach this is very clear.
So, I, I appreciate your adding context here, Dr. Burnham. Nevertheless, we are who we are and we're in the situation that we're in, which is, we need to do our fiduciary role here, which is to get the most bang for our buck and to help guide our department and the town as a whole down the best path, part of which involves discovery, part of which involves perhaps using some MSBA dollars to begin to figure this out or determine what the best paths are to go down. They are not a strategic partner. And I don't know if they intend to be a strategic partner or not. I don't, I don't know exactly what their charter is, but they are clearly not a strategic partner. In fact, they are the opposite of a strategic partner. They are a strategic hindrance. And I think that that needs to be communicated. Because they could be a strategic partner if they were organized in a way that was intended to be in a strategic partnership with the school systems. And, and I think that that is the, that is the gap that at least we stumbled across over the course of the last few weeks. I also think, by the way, that they are very well-suited to larger school departments that have the staff and the way with all to be able to track and adapt to these changes. And they also are much better suited for city-style governments that do not operate on a set annual strategic planning calendar. Cities operate on a much more compressed calendar and are able to react much more with greater agility than we are. And I think all of that needs to be communicated.
I, I don't disagree. I think that the timelines for town government and their processes don't sync up well with the timeline that is MSBA. And in terms of being a strategic partner, you're right. Our process has already begun before they roll out their process. Well, if we were going to be able to strategically count on this as something reliable, maybe they ought to be rolling things out well in advance. Like, okay, we're now entertaining things for two years out from now, and these are the things we're gonna fund. Right? It's, it's, it is a source of frustration, for sure. And it is very difficult to be strategic and plan, even if you're not mapping out 10 years, even mapping out five years, is a challenge to know what, if anything, will be reimbursable and at what rate. Don't know. Right? I, I can appreciate that we get those questions from finance committee or the capital planning committee, "Well, what's the reimbursement rate?" Can't tell you. I don't know.
So, you know, just to try to close the discussion or make an attempt at it, you know, one of the discussions that, that came out of what uncovered over the last couple of days was, you know, perhaps we include a paragraph or two, and it wasn't in the initial draft, from Carol's letter to the legislators about this. In a fit of frustration the other day, I sent an email to our, to, to my representatives, Representative Kishmerik and Senator Cronin. I did receive replies from both, and I had a conversation with Senator Cronin. And, you know, he said, "Well, number one, what's your ask?" And I said, "Oh, I'm just really griping. I don't have a specific ask here." But, but what he did offer is, if you have a specific ask or if you can come up with one, by all means, communicate that and copy me, and I will do my darndest to drive it to ground." And, you know, so, so I'm envisioning some sort of communication with the executive director of the MSBA that, number one, seeks some form of sympathy for what we've gone through because of a lack of understanding and poor communication or lack of clarity on their part, or the, the changing conditions as we're going through it, and seeks to communicate, "This is, this is what a municipality has to deal with, because we operate, we're trying to be strategic," which means looking at multiple years out and needing, but operating on an annual planning cycle, which begins nine to 10 months out from the actual beginning of a fiscal year, and we need some level of predictability here. So, that, that's the ask, ultimately. You know, I, I, I think that that's reasonable. And, and to whatever extent our legislators can help us with that, that would be, I think that would be great. I mean, at the end of the day, the MSBA works for us. It's not the other way around. And, and I, I, I think that we need to assert that.
Who do they answer to?
My understanding is it's the Department of Revenue.
Oh.
Yes, the treasurer of the state of New Hea-, or state of Massachusetts is the chair of their board.
Oh. I didn't realize that.
One, one idea that I had in thinking about the problem is, they have a huge legal department, and they have lots and lots of turnover within their legal department, based on looking through who's worked there and how long they've worked there and all those kind of things. Would it be beneficial to us to maybe have our school lawyer reach out to someone who was a former attorney for MSBA and have them maybe work as a consultant or a co-counsel on advising us about how to approach this issue? I noticed that a lot of them, a lot, that both the general counsel and the senior deputy general counsel went to the same law school that I did. And so, I'm happy to help. I don't know if I would be able to reach them, but at least we'd be able to open the door and have a conversation. But I think that they have a huge legal department. And when you have a huge legal department and you work in public service or public administration, you tend to have lots of turnover. So, somebody's gotta know how to move the levers. And I'm, I'm sure that they work at a firm that advises construction companies and school districts. So, maybe finding that person would be a way to, you know, break up the logjam here.
Um, so, the letter of interest, that's not a commitment. It's just, we're interested. When would we have to commit to the project?
So, the exact dates, I don't recall. I'm not looking at the document.
Like, what's the rough timeline?
But the, the general scheme of things is, is that the LOIs are due in, I believe, February.
February.
And the decisions are made several months thereafter, and then we would have to make a commitment, I want to say, November or December of next year. So, the, the timeline is, I ran it through in my head as I kind of overlooked, our timeline was that to, if we were to submit a LOI, let's say in February, and it were, were to be approved, it is something that we could affect positively at a special town meeting, but not through the capital planning process in the annual town meeting for the following year.
Right.
So, it would have to be affected either in advance, through the capital planning process now without knowing, or, and frankly, we're not on a good path to getting this approved right now, or, and, and we never will be with this level of ambiguity, I don't think. Or, it would have to be something where we would have to seek available funds for, at a November special town meeting if we were to be approved. Which, by the way, I think we should do. Like, I, submitting an LOI doesn't cost anything, except time.
Does it cost us later if we decide not to pursue the project?
No, I don't believe it does. I don't think there's a penalty. Wasn't in the documents that I saw.
There's no cost.
Are they less likely to consider us in the future if, if you pull it?
I...
Should we be wary of that distinction?
Let's just put it to you this way. I don't think it would be advisable for us to annually submit a letter and see where it goes and withdraw it, because it didn't go anywhere. Because eventually, they're gonna look at us and say, "Oh, yeah, here's their annual letter." I don't think we would look, be looked upon favorably.
Because then we're committing.
If that was gonna be our, our approach. In order for us to submit a letter, the letter would come from me. I need a, a vote of this body, as well as the select board, authorizing me to submit it. So, I, I can't go ahead and submit it. We, we can't even just vote to go ahead and submit it without the select board also voting, because I have to provide evidence that the vote existed.
Does capital planning look likely to fund the Turkey Hill renovation study?
I think that the capital planning committee looks positively on the study and schematic design. Just for clarification, somewhat of the context that Dr. Burnham just communicated, the capital planning committee has no power. It's strictly an advisory committee. The town manager actually determines what is on the priority list, the final list of priorities, and the level to which the funding recommendation is made to town meeting. Once that funding occurs, the town manager then decides, if, if, for example, it does not adequately fund what is in the prioritized list, what falls below that line. So, there's a, there's a great deal of authority that resides individually with the town manager on this. The capital planning committee has an influential role, and I, I think that it's likely that this is going to do well, probably not as well as a police car or something along those lines, but I think that, I think that, you know, it was looked upon pretty favorably. And by the way, it also got a high priority from us. We prioritize this number two, and, and that does hold some weight as well. So, you know, I'm...
I just feel like...
I'm optimistic about, about that plan.
There's a lot of information we don't have yet before we can commit to keeping Turkey Hill for the, a school for the lifespan of the windows or whatnot, and it just feels like we're suddenly getting a little ahead of ourselves.
I, I do think, honestly, that if we were able to do the larger study, we would have information.
Yep.
And if we were, after having that information, able to submit a statement of interest, when they start to inquire, we can point to what we know from the study.
Right.
We don't have...
True.
Right? Like, we would have something to point to, because they are going to want to dig in deeper to our maintenance practices, our investments in facilities, so on and so forth, as they start exploring this, through this process with us. So, I think potentially having something that comes out of the study then potentially informs our thinking around what accelerated repair projects does it make sense for us to pursue? And, oh, by the way, here's, here's some of the backup for why we're, we're now pursuing this project.
So, I, I agree with that logic as well. I, you know, I think that the, the flip side of it is, is that the windows are in rough condition, there's exposed asbestos, like, there's issues there, right? And there is a certain amount of immediacy that will not be addressed by pulling this request.
Right.
That being said, I don't think that the request is gonna, this, the window request is being looked upon favorably. I don't think it's gonna get funded. And I think that whether or not we decide to submit an LOI, and I think there's ample reason not to, as well as, you know, potentially to explore that, either way, I, I think, I think we should withdraw the request for the windows to the CPC. And just take that off of the list of things for them to consider. I, I, I mean, we're outside of the window to be able to do something like that, but I think it makes the CPC's job easier to say, "Okay, they don't want that, so we don't have to, you know, put it last," or whatever. But I, I think that we should communicate a withdrawal, but not a withdrawal of the need. In other words, we're not X-ing it out entirely, but we're pushing it out at least a year on the anticipated capital requirements. I, I think that that, at this point, given what we've been through over the last several weeks, is probably the, the responsible course.
I, I would agree, because I can't see the select board signing off on a letter of intent when we don't have numbers and we don't know what the, the reimbursement could possibly be. There's so much ambiguity in this whole thing, I can't see any way that that's gonna get pushed through in February.
Perhaps in another year, but not this year.
In another year, absolutely. When we have the study numbers, I think...
I, I could see a scenario where we're in the same place in a year from now, and we do submit the LOI without knowing the reimbursement numbers or, you know, with, with, but having had a little bit more headway to kind of think about where we're at and plan around it, and that study will hopefully be in process. Right? I, I just, I feel like, right now, it's more or less a fait accompli, and I'd rather be ahead of that than behind it. We're already a little behind it, but, truth be told.
I think in late May, we'll know more, after town meeting, when we know what's being funded. And we'll know if municipal planning brought a plan for town hall to town meeting, and I think we can probably, I, I would like it if in late May, I mean, which is like, I think, the next session of the school board, if we could have a strategic planning session and discuss coming up with an actual plan, but once we have information. Because right now, we're just, it's a lot of, "Well, I don't know." But we'll definitely, we will know more in late May, after town meeting.
We hope so.
So.
Mr. Leighton?
So, when you had first talked about putting this into the letter to the legislators, I was concerned, because I feel like I wanted these to be separate concerns of budget versus the MSBA. I thought the MSBA discussion might be something that we could reach out to the legislators at a future date, when we kind of figure things out. My initial thought was, it, it sounds like the MSBA would not allow us to turn this into a, a town building in 10 years. So, that was my initial concern of, I wouldn't want to request money from the MSBA to fix the roof or fix the boiler. I was thinking, okay, maybe this is now the, the time, based off of the data and the information, that maybe it makes sense for a new Turkey Hill with MSBA, similar to what we did with the high school, where I feel like we do know that information. So, I'm not that concerned about getting information from the MSBA. On their website, I did see that they do have a note about the reimbursement rate calculation. And it said, "Every, every district starts off at a base rate of 31 percentage reimbursement points." And then they can add stuff because of the community income, the community property wealth factor, the community poverty factor, but at least that gets you at least the 31 percentage reimbursement points to start with. I also did look up the Mass General Law, too. It was chapter 70B, section 15, which talks about the sale or lease of buildings for which school facilities, projects, applicants receive grant payments. And it did seem to say, it was pretty much a proceeding of 20 years was the, the number listed in state law. So, that definitely raises concerns again.
Thank you for looking that up. So, I think where we're at here is, we have two things that, that could possibly happen. One would be to pull the window request for this year. And the other would be to send some kind of communication to MSBA indicating the difficulty in maneuvering. So, those were the two thoughts that I thought I heard coming out of that, along with Laura talking about a strategic meeting in the spring, but we can do that in the spring.
Let me know more.
Yeah. If that is what I'm hearing, then I would need a motion to do any of that.
So, can we take them separately?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Motion to, motion to pull the window, or to make it our lowest priority, or pull the capital plan request for the windows at Turkey Hill. Not the vinyl, but the...
Right.
Right, right. No, it's...
I would like to state that the vinyl, I think, is very, the safety film...
So, it's a...
Is still a very high... Is still a very high priority and very important, and we are asking for it for the safety of the students.
So I would suggest wording it as, we just rescind that request.
So, motion to rescind the request for the window study, or...
Window engineering.
Window engineering from the capital plan.
Second.
Discussion?
I would ask through the chair if the superintendent could give her opinion on this matter, the windows.
As I, as I said to Mr. Beardmore and Mrs. Ashambo when we spoke about this, you know, there is a school of thought that, you know, prioritize buttoning up the envelope of the building to prevent any further wear and tear damage, you know, so the thought of prioritizing replacing the roof, replacing the windows, right? You have a weather tight envelope. But I did express to them my concern with the ambiguity of the commitment that we would be making through funding a project like that with MSBA. I would not want, I would not be recommending for this body to move forward with a roof project or a window replacement project if that meant that we were now committing to keeping the building open as a school for 25 or 30 years. And I say 25 or 30 years, because in this next cycle, they will entertain window replacements and roof replacements. In order to be even considered, your windows have to be at least 30 years old, and your roof has to be at least 25 years old. How that number aligns with what they perceive as the reasonable life of windows or a roof is concerning to me, because we could be making a commitment to keeping that building open for upwards of 20 years. And I just don't think that that is a prudent move, honestly, because we're still going to have ADA compliance issues, it's still not sprinkled, we have original systems throughout the building. We're not going to ride another 20 or 25 or 30 years without some major investments in that building. So I don't, I don't know that I would advise that we should proceed at this point. And where it seems that it's not going to be endorsed anyway, I, I'm not opposed to the notion that we would sort of bump it back and not have it as a priority for the upcoming cycle.
Clearly, I would, though, in doing so, notate that it is due to the weird funding problems and not due to the need, that this is desperately needed. But unless the town wants to fit foot the whole bill...
Right.
Which, I can't see that happening, I would add that. Any other discussion about this? Then, the motion was to rescind the window study from the capital, this year's capital plan. All those in favor?
I, uh...
Oh, go ahead.
Can I offer one amendment?
Yep. Yep, go ahead. I probably said something wrong.
Sorry, nope, you got it right.
Okay.
What I didn't think of was, and I would ask Laura to amend her motion, and I would amend my second, to move it to FY 26.
To keep it on there?
To keep it on the capital plan, but move it out a year.
Move it out a year.
Okay.
Because if you drop it off and then put it, it's just...
Okay. Then I rescind my motion, and I would like to make a new motion to move the school committee's capital plan request for the Turkey Hill window schematics from this year to the 2026 priorities.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Then that would be what we need to do. All right, that was the first issue. Now, the second issue is the writing of some kind of letter to request to the MSBA that they play ball a little bit easier with municipalities.
I would offer that I could draft that, because I think I'm probably closest to...
I think so.
The experience.
I know that is not something I would offer to draft, because I don't think I would get it.
Yeah, and I, so I would draft it and submit it to you, Carol, for, to be circulated before our next meeting.
And who would we send it to?
Okay.
Who would we send it to?
To the executive director.
To the executive director of MSBA.
Would it focus on the experience for smaller towns, smaller municipalities that aren't as flexible?
Yeah, I would relay, I intend to relay our experience, given the context of their changing conditions, and how the lack of clarity has led to what I consider to be now, at this point, a lost year on this project.
Right.
And, but, but also affecting our ability to strategically plan long-term around broader projects that go well beyond the windows, and ask for clarity and consideration, and to copy, you know, our delegation.
Yes, yes.
I just, I feel, I don't feel like, I personally, I wouldn't do this in my personal life, I don't feel like we should do it as, as public officials, like, I don't want to let this pass without what effectively amounts to a letter of complaint, you know, like, I feel like it at least deserves that.
All right. I don't think we need to vote on that. I think we'll do that at the next meeting, we'll put that on the agenda. Okay. All right, let's move on then.
Thank you.
Response to the LEA negotiations. And I know that we had determined that Mr. Schoenbrini and I would be on the negotiating team, and where are we at now? Oh, here we go.
This is a draft letter in the folder.
Oh, it's in the folder?
Is it in the folder? It should have been in the folder. Um...
It is in there.
Oh, okay.
What's it called?
I'm not seeing it.
OB Discussion, D-Draft, LEA Response.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not connected to the internet for some reason, it doesn't like me, so if it's new, but she gave me the hard copy.
Oh, okay.
I have the hard copy, so...
Oh, yeah.
Therefore, big surprise, I can't connect to the internet. So, in looking over this letter, I have no problem reading it out loud, so that people know what we are talking about. So it says, Dear Ms. Foyle and Ms. Sabatini, the Lunenburg School Committee, in response to your request to open negotiations for a 24-27 contract, appoint Mr. Anthony Schoenbrini, Lunenburg School Committee Secretary, and Mrs. Carol Ashambo, Lunenburg School Committee Chair, as their representatives for negotiations. Like the LEA, the Lunenburg School Committee also believes in working collaboratively to problem solve and is committed to dialogue intended to develop an understanding of our mutual concerns. While we are open to discussing the request to use an IBB approach, we feel confident that we can work in the spirit of IBB, even if a formal IBB model is not adopted. We are eager to begin this work with you and are proposing an initial meeting to take place as early in January as possible in order to discuss ground rules and the negotiating approach to be used. The members of the Lunenburg School Committee team are available to meet on Thursday evenings at 7:00 PM. We look forward to working with you. Sincerely, Carol Ashambo. So, that would be our response, and if everyone is all right with that, that's what we will do.
We'd make a motion to approve the letter as written.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, then, that's, that's what we will do. Next, student activity class account reallocation.
All righty, so we have heard from...
Yes.
A few, a few classes, but at this point, we're still working with them and helping them understand the process that they would need to go through in order to come before the school committee and request the monies, and move the monies. That said, there are some classes that we still have heard nothing from, relative to the letter that you had received and being surprised to hear. Our secretaries over at the, at the high school did reach out to anyone that they had documentation in terms of who served that particular year as a class advisor. And then, if they had that information, they reached out to those class advisors and asked those class advisors to reach out to any of the students from the class. Obviously, there are gaps in some of the records, so there were people that we didn't have contact information for. So we're happy that there were some people that did learn of this through this meeting and/or the article that was in the Lunenburg Ledger. That said, the classes of 2003, '07, '10, '16, and '18, again, no activity, no interest expressed either by class advisors in that they haven't been able to find somebody or some other individuals reaching out to us. The combined total from those classes is $11,215.23. Now, I'd like to circle back around to discussion from earlier in the evening relative to the field trip and the equity challenge. And I know that Mr. Beardmore was not present at the last meeting, but when we talked about this the first time, we brought this up at the last meeting, our recommendation relative to these monies in these inactive lines of the student activity accounts, we're recommending that a scholarship line be created in the student activity account at the high school, and that these monies from inactive accounts, and potentially a couple more, depending on what students decide to do, whether they pursue requesting the monies, or if they learn that, in fact, monies from inactive accounts would go to a scholarship fund, some of them may decide, you know what, that's, that's a great thought, we're on board, you can have our, our money from our inactive account. But the thinking, the recommendation from us is, you have to reallocate this in some way, and since there's been conversation around the high cost of some of these really wonderful educational experience type trips, particularly trips abroad, we think it would be a good, a good use of these funds to designate it for scholarship. That said, if that is the wish of the committee, we would then have to come up with guidelines and/or policy around how scholarships are allocated.
Aye. Mr. Schoenbrini?
Was this a, are these class funds given as a bequest without reservation, or are there some stipulations about how they were used? Because if it's the second, do we have to get the permission of the group?
They're inactive, they've been inactive for years, and it's up to this body how to reallocate the funds, once they've been inactive for at least a two-year window.
That is what the policy states. The nagging problem I have is, in Brandon's letter, he stated that he was told upon graduation they would remain in this, in this fund, and they could use it out of this fund. And in our policy, it says they were, they need to be told that after two years, the monies can be gone. That is not what he indicated, and that makes me uncomfortable, particularly to the classes that are newer.
Yes.
Well, the class of 2001 reached out, and I feel like that was one we could have safely said, oh, it's been so long, but the class of 2001, the class of 2005 reached out, so I'm very nervous about...
We can delay the vote. It's fine, we can delay this as long as you like.
I don't want to vote on this.
We're trying to clean up loose ends according to policy.
Definitely do not want to vote on this tonight, given the amount, I saw the article in the ledger, so thank you for putting that in there, but given the amount of classes which have already come forward just in the past few, since the article in the ledger came out, I would not want to act on this tonight.
Mr. Beardmore?
So I did watch the last meeting, and I neglected during public comment, I wanted to thank PAC for actually shooting the last meeting with a real live camera, and the audio was clear, and I was able to follow the meeting, and I appreciate that. And I, I appreciate the sentiment around allocating those types of funds to some sort of scholarship for exactly this kind of thing. I think, you know, if that is the eventuality, I think that's great, like, we should do that, and establish a policy and a process to do that, I think that'd be great. In this case, as somebody who deals in communications in my professional life, I'm a big believer in multiple communication paths, and what we've seen is, there's been some but limited success in direct outreach through class advisors, there's been success through, I don't even think it was, it was a news article in the ledger, which you have to assume, you know, somebody's mom or aunt or friend saw it, picked up the phone, and, you know, I, that's how these things tend to happen, particularly to somebody who graduated in 2017. I don't think there's huge readership of the ledger amongst the class of 2017, but I could be wrong. But I, you know, I, I think that that's encouraging, that that sort of thing happened, and I think that we should make a concerted effort over the next couple of months, you know, particularly now it's the holidays, people are going to be home, can we get a notice in the ledger that says, hey, if you are a class officer in one of these classes, or you know of somebody, please send an email to this email address or call this number, because you're going to lose your money. Or, you know, something along those lines, as well as, you know, social media or whatever, just to say that we exhausted all reasonable efforts to do this.
Could I suggest, because this could make a difference, could the committee take up and vote on what they would do with any of these unclaimed inactive monies?
Oh, sure.
So that in the notice, we can say that if they are not...
They will be applied.
That they will go to a scholarship fund, so that we can help defray costs for students to be able to, you know, participate in some of our travel abroad type experiences for them. Because I think then, some people may say, oh, that's, that's a really, we're good with that.
I think we should do that, and we should just kind of make it a time and date specific, right? So, project our intent that by February 1st, or whatever the date is, like, we're gonna...
Whatever it is, that we will pull the plug on this.
I'm concerned that students, that class officers were told the money would be sitting there in the account based on Brandon's letter, and...
So, so here's the thing that you need to understand, it's possible that they were told, and that's what they perceived they were told.
Right. They need to be given it in, in writing. This needs to be in writing, I would think.
Can I ask what class was Brandon, again?
2017.
Yeah, so, I have the, I searched the... Yeah, so I have the, I searched the policy, and it was updated August of 2021 with that language that once a class has graduated from high school, their funds should be removed from high school, no later than two years from the graduation. So I think it was added to the policy in 2021, so maybe in 2017.
So I don't think it's fair that we would hold the class of 2017 for a policy that happened after.
So that's perfectly fine, but you're going to leave it there?
But we can't leave it there forever.
Indefinitely.
Yeah, it can't be there forever. But but I'm not comfortable pulling it yet. Mr. Schoenbrini.
When this happens in my work, sometimes when we have to get notices to people and we can't use a subpoena, so we can't use a process server, we would hire a private investigator to go find them and document...
Are we taking up a collection to hire the private investigator?
If it's $11,000 that we can have access to, the cost of a private investigator to track people down is not going to be a significant portion of that.
Wouldn't? I don't, I think that's an unreasonable expense. And, you know, I was not a senior class officer, but I was friends with class off, like, what we're do- I don't recall, and this is some time ago, but obviously, but the expectation was, was that you were going to withdraw the money and spend it on a class reunion, right? Like, that was the idea. And you were going to drain most of the money before you graduated or at graduation on a gift or something like that, right? So, in my mind, this is not unreasonable. And we're not talking about such a large amount of money that if this were to proceed to some sort of legal action, like, we could-
Oh, there's not enough.
You know what I mean, there isn't enough there. So, in my mind, I think that saying, you know, by whatever the date is, February 1st, June 1st, whatever, we're going to transfer this money into a scholarship fund to fund, you know,
Travel abroad.
Travel abroad or whatever, like, I think that that's, I think it's a reasonable course of action, but I do think we need to kind of satisfy that, what do lawyers call it, like a fiduciary responsibility or something to mitigate or something, right?
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, you know, like, we're doing what we can to make it known.
Well, you've got to consider too, like, the class of 2001 has a little more than $3,000 sitting here, they've been graduated for more than 20 years, and they've, I'm sure they've had reunions, if they've had any.
Are they gonna, when they reached out, are they gonna have a reunion now?
But they've reached out to give money back.
About the process of recovering funds.
If people wanted the money and they knew the money was there, I just, I don't know that every member of the class knew how much money was there. That was probably just, you know, the class officers who were aware, and typically, it's the class officers who organize your reunions.
Typically, not always, but typically.
Can we keep running notices in the ledger and see?
We, I can, there's a cost to that.
There's a cost, roughly.
If I'm going to put a notice in, there is a cost.
How much is it?
Uh, I'll have to go back and check, but it is not minimal.
It wasn't cheap. It was expensive. What if, for the next, for once a month, for the next five months, one of us wrote a letter to the editor, because she does publish those, and explain this?
Can we put it on Facebook too?
Yeah, I mean, it's social media, and, yeah, we just need to cover some bases here, I don't want to...
You know, and the other thing I would do is, I wouldn't burden anybody at the office with this, and if it's something I can do, I would do it. If I had the graduation program, then I would have the officers' names.
In the yearbooks.
Oh, yearbook, so, or I could go to the yearbook, yes, better idea. And they must have the yearbooks at the high school. Yeah. And find out who these people are, and then, Google.
The class of 2001, find their kids.
You know, they, you know, Google, and if their parents are still living at the spot where they lived as a kid, which they may or may not be, you can get ahold of them that way and send a letter, then I would feel better.
Does the school keep a copy of all the yearbooks?
He says they're in the high school library.
Yeah, and I mean,
I mean, I don't mind, I'll go do it.
The right person being aware of this.
Right.
I could, within a day, I could get in touch with all four of my class officers, like, it would, you know, it would take a minimal effort, but I know who they are.
It doesn't always, like, for example, the president of the class of 2003 is a highly-ranked coast guard officer and could be anywhere. She's not going to worry about $19.33. So, you know, it could happen that somebody here has, you know, gone far.
Yep.
You know? So...
Carol, it sounds like you're volunteering to become our P.I.
I'm happy, I am happy to sit and go through the yearbooks and find out who these people are.
Oh, yeah. My concern, I think, would be, I'm okay with the policy for future classes, let's notify them for 2021, 2022, 2023, whatever. But I feel like for these classes, because the policy has changed, I feel like it would be good to have a form where they sign off or they email back, yes, we approve moving the funds to a scholarship. Or, yes, I will be there and fill out the forms.
So, should we make a motion that we should start a scholarship fund that former officers can donate their funds or allocate their funds to?
I think we, I think if we said that any unclaimed class funds would go towards a scholarship fund for helping our students with travel abroad.
I'm still not comfortable with that though, because students, the class of 2005...
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that we're ready to do that yet, but I'm saying that it would, that's, if you want to advertise, once we have run the gamut of any way we can come up with of contacting these people, this is where the monies would go.
So assuming we do the outreach, would you guys be comfortable with April 1st? We say, anything left after April 1st, we're transferring to a new account that is a scholarship fund?
If the outreach is there, I mean, they can't stay forever by the end of the fiscal year, or something. But it can't, it can't sit there forever. But if the class of 2001 reached out to inquire about recovering the funds, then anybody could, you know, so we have to work on those other classes.
I don't want to open a can of worms, but do we have funds older than the ones listed in the data?
When the policy was changed, that's when we started having people go back and try to reconcile any of the class lines that still had funds. And that's when the outreach happened, so, I mean, this has been going on for a bit of time.
So the class of 1999, where did their funds go?
Apparently, they don't, they don't have any. They must have done this reconciliation at some point, some number of years ago, and taken this up and moved the money at that time too.
FindMassMoney.com or something, you know, like, wherever the heck it goes.
Whatever that is, that disappears.
It's scary, because I was thinking the same thing.
Do we need to make a motion to have a proposed scholarship fund that would be funded by the money relinquished on these accounts? In the event that we can provide sufficient public notice to the class president? Is that what we're looking for next?
I think if you want, if you want us to advertise this again, but we can't, it would be expensive to do it in the ledger, so like, what I said is, I don't know how else we get around that.
Facebook.
Facebook.
Facebook and calling people's moms.
I'm willing to bet that people from the class of 2018 are not on Facebook.
No, but their mothers are.
Yeah, the mothers.
Their moms and their aunts is on.
Yeah, that's probably true.
And it doesn't have to be just the president too, so.
No, just any class officer or any class member, if they can find the class, I mean, the class officer or somebody
Right.
that we can roll with, okay, so how are we doing this? Then, are we going to go
I move.
resort to Facebook at this point?
I move that we resolve to communicate through Facebook and other available but free means that we will communicate our intent. Number one, invite class officers from the affected classes to contact us at their earliest convenience and inform them of our intent to transfer these funds no later than the end of the fiscal year to a new account that will be established for the purposes of funding student travel.
One second.
Okay, all of those in favor?
What was the last part of the?
They'll be transferred to an account intended to fund student travel. And we'll have to develop a policy for that.
Yes, we need a policy, obviously, to go with it, but...
They can be separate items.
Okay. Any other discussion on it? Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
Okay, want to post? Okay.
We got two opposed votes tonight, that's pretty good.
Most I've ever seen.
I just, I feel like still the kids would be going out of their money.
That's okay. All right, so we, uh...
Just from my notes, who was the second on that motion?
Tony.
Tony.
Okay. FY25 budget development.
So in your folder, I gave you some examples of the kinds of data that we're looking at as we're embarking on making some decisions about where cuts will come for next year's budget development. You have some information relative to the kinds of caseloads that our social workers are managing by building, and the frequency with which they're in counseling, whether or not these services are included on an IEP service grid or as part of a 504, whether or not they've been through a referral process, so on and so forth. But ultimately, it's just to see the number of kiddos that are receiving support currently. You also have some numbers based on the current year's numbers by grade, rolling them forward to the next grade, taking a look at the number of classrooms that we would need for each grade level based on the number of students, assuming no new registrations, just exactly the number of students we have right now for grades kindergarten through eight, and of course, right now, our numbers for kindergarten next year are unknown, we haven't even opened our kindergarten registration yet. But the last several years, you can see the numbers haven't exceeded 120. So if we roll everyone forward, next year, grade one would have 107 students, grade two, 117, three would be 123, grade four, 114, grade five, 109, grade six, that's our current big fifth grade, 149 there, 111 next year in grade seven, and 122 in grade eight. We think that five classrooms should suffice, you know, with some of the smaller numbers, like 107, getting down to four classrooms at that grade, it does bump the number up. I think, you know, our goal is to keep the numbers similar to what we have had in recent years, not not to exceed much higher than about 25 in a classroom up through grade five. We have had class sizes in grades six, seven, and eight upwards of 27, 28, occasionally a 29 in recent years. You also have an outline, if you, if you look at the high school data, the grid that you have there just shows you in the master schedule what courses are running A block, B block, C block, and so on, how many English classes are running that block, math classes, et cetera. But you also have the number of students in that course, that block. You can see that the numbers are quite, quite a range. We have some classes as few as three, four, five, and others that are more akin to a 20 range. But we have many, many classes with fewer than 20 students running at the high school right now. Just so that you understand how we're going to look at this as well, each year, students have to take an English class. We take a look at, all right, grade nine English, how many kiddos are in an honors English in grade nine? They are likely rolling forward to an honors English in grade 10. How many kiddos is that total? How many class sections of honors English in grade 10 will we need to run in order to carry forward all the ninth graders who are currently in honors? Of course, we're making some assumptions, there may be kiddos in an honors class in English right now, it's ninth graders that don't stay with honors, and there might be others that are in a college prep level that might move up into honors. But this is, generally speaking, how we try to strategically think about how many sections of each kind of course at each level will we have to run based on what we know is the typical progression year to year within the English classes, within math courses, so on and so forth. You also have some numbers for the number of students that are currently sitting in study halls. Yes?
Are there students who are taking more than one study hall?
So, I'm going to go on a limb here and say, no, not in the same semester. In other words, I would find it to be highly unusual and a little bit concerning, quite frankly, if there was a student who was in study hall, A block, and again, in G block.
Okay, so these are...
However, there might be students who are in a study hall first semester and again, in second semester.
But not two study halls a day?
I would, I'll explore that, but I would be rather upset to find that out.
I'm just curious if that's, if study halls being used that way. These are a lot of students in study halls.
All that extra time.
Yeah. He should be contacting all the people that's from the classes.
There you go.
His two study halls, it's definitely a dude.
This is a lot of students in study halls.
So, can I ask a question of teachers from a non-teacher perspective? What pedagogical purpose does a study hall serve that would warrant 31, 33, 32, 27, 29, 28, I mean, 35, 29, I mean, there are so many study halls that are as big or bigger than the biggest class. I looked at the biggest class that's actually... I looked at the biggest class that's actually teaching is 30, but there are multiple study halls that have more kids than that. So what are they gaining by having that study hall? I literally don't know because I slept through study hall my entire high school career.
So there are some who will make a case that we have students taking multiple AP courses and they need time to do some of their AP work. We have others who would make the case that we have students who are athletes and they have practice and games after school, so they need time to do their homework.
But like, is that borne out by the pedagogical educational research? Does it help them?
I have no data that would indicate to me that broadly it is beneficial across the board. For a student here or there, perhaps.
But why don't they...
My bigger conversation that I've been trying to drive for some time is we need to have a conversation about teaching practice as it relates to homework. What is the purpose for homework? How much homework is reasonable and to be expected at the high school level? We haven't had a lot of forward progress in terms of having that dialogue. I still would like to have it. Relative to relieving stress that students feel, there's a case to be made that there are AP students who are very stressed out with all of the work that they have, and they need to have a study hall so that they can do some of their AP work. I would argue, why are we putting them into so many AP classes if they're that stressed about their AP classes that they have to have a study period?
There's no stick line.
Perhaps we should reconfigure...
What are you talking about?
Perhaps we should reconfigure how we execute on the AP courses. Maybe there's an AP seminar where kids are enrolled in AP this and seminar block X number of times a week, and that's connected to the work they do with their AP course. There's lots of good conversation to have here. There's no magic bullet solution here. It's complicated. A high school schedule is very complicated. So I don't mean to make it sound like it's, oh, it's easy, we can just do it this way and alleviate the stress that the AP students are feeling. But there's good conversation to be had there. I would prefer for those blocks, and I have expressed this, I would prefer for those blocks to become targeted support. I would like to see it purposefully scheduled. I would like to see some blocks being designated as math support, where students who struggle with math could be assigned to a support block. Students who are on 504s for executive functioning could be assigned to a support block where they're getting support from a staff member around their organization, their time management, so on and so forth. I think that there's a way to more optimally utilize that time in the schedule in a more intentional and beneficial way in terms of your question around pedagogy and the impact there. Yep.
So two questions. The first question is, thinking back about the presentations you gave to us last year and the year before on MTSS, it does not seem like that the number of kids in study hall maps on to the number of kids that would need that number of interventions. And so there are kids that are in study hall that don't need the extra help, and then there are kids in study hall that aren't in AP. And so the question then is, what are they doing there? And then the second question I have is, what do the teachers want to have happen?
About study hall?
Yeah, I mean, do they care? Like, I don't, I have no idea. Like, I don't know if my teacher liked teaching a study hall, or if she didn't, or if she noticed that I slept the whole time.
So for the most part, our study halls historically have been supervised by paraprofessionals.
Okay. So like, if the, if the study halls were made with more intention, would that impose a greater workload on teachers or support staff or pairs? Or like, who's going to do all of the work that would be done if these were made more intentional?
That would have to be part of the planning. However, I don't necessarily envision it as, you know, your typical, let's say, math teacher has five math classes in a day. It could be that they are assigned four of your traditional math courses, and their fifth class would be a math intervention block where kids are intentionally assigned to that kind of targeted help. So the teachers would still have five classes in math.
So it wouldn't change the workload, we'd just change how it's being used?
It'd essentially be a different kind of math class, potentially. One way to look at it.
Mr. Beadmore.
So looking at this through a budget lens, I am not particularly concerned about study halls. I...
I would ask you to think about it through the lens of structured time on learning.
Fair enough. But all the reasons that you gave around how study halls could or should be used, you know, my personal evidence from my own children is that they're very beneficial.
And I do believe for some that they are.
And, you know, for whatever that's worth. And we want our kids to take advantage of extracurriculars and sports and band and all these other kinds of things, and for them to do that, that eats up a lot of time. I mean, I can just, you know, I don't want to speak to specifics of my own kid, but I can tell you, we have a lot of kids that are programmed from the minute they walk into the school in the morning until eight, nine, sometimes after 10 o'clock at night if it's an away game or that kind of thing.
Yep.
Right? And so I think that that sort of activity is important in certain circumstances, particularly if a kid is programmed that way and also taking multiple AP classes, right? What I'm concerned about is how are we going to spend less money? So, you know, not necessarily where to direct new monies or how to reprogram our teachers into additional responsibilities, but how are we going to spend less?
So it wouldn't be additional responsibilities, it'd be different responsibilities.
Okay. There are a lot of numbers on this list that are single-digit numbers.
Yes.
Or low double-digit numbers. And part of this, I hearken back to a decision that was made in Lunenburg about 15 years ago to not regionalize with Aaron Shirley. And when we made that decision, we made a decision that we were going to go it alone as a small school system, and with that came certain burdens. And the burdens are far less efficient when it comes to programming classes. And that is why we hear every year from our high school administrators, this thing is really hard, and we all learn about what singletons are and bumping singletons for band against foreign languages and why there were more kids in French than Latin this year because it's a band class, or those kinds of things, right? Like, that is part of being in school in Lunenburg any time after roughly 2003 or '04, whenever that decision was made. We have to do the best we can with what we have. What I've been thinking about is, you know, we've got encouraging news this year in terms of our, you know, standardized testing scores. And a lot of that has to do with, for example, I would assume, very targeted teaching to low numbers in essentials classes, right? Those kinds of things. We have subjects here that we are doing essentials, college prep, and honors, and in limited cases, all three plus AP. That's a lot when you're servicing 100 kids in a class. It, you know, it just doesn't scale. It's effective but not efficient, is how I would interpret it. And I feel like we're going to have to make difficult decisions on how do we maintain as much effectiveness as possible but get more efficient. And I think that those are going to be incredibly difficult decisions to make that we're going to be burdened with here, right? And, you know, unless it's mandated, everything's on the table as far as I'm concerned. But, you know, we need to, we need to look at it. Do we need essentials classes in all of the classes that we're teaching? Do we need all of the AP classes that we're teaching? Do we need to have, you know, multiple blocks of honors in certain subjects? Those are the areas that I'm concerned with. You know, and that's going to create more scheduling problems, by the way, when we begin to do those things. But I think that, you know, given limited dollars, you know, we've got seven kids in AP Bio, we have seven kids in Essential Physics, you know, like, those are hard to sustain. It's a lot of dollars going into that class, those classrooms. I assume special ed, like, there's no, we got to do everything we're doing there. Is there any, is there any room or is there any, are we doing anything in special ed specifically around the high school and scheduling that is, that effectively amounts to discretionary spending on our part?
I don't know if I'd categorize it as discretionary spending, but we'll be taking a close look at the different programmatic offerings we have in special ed and looking at the possibility of merging or consolidating into one program versus two based on the number of students and whether or not we think we can staff adequately to provide a good level of support to students.
And the academic support line and the directed studies line, do each of these blocks represent a teacher in each of those blocks?
So the academic support there, you're looking specifically at a teacher who was hired with COVID-related money to provide some intervention. And we also have a TLC program that services a variety of students, some of whom are there in part for the benefit of the academic support. So that's why we're really looking at the students involved in these programs and what their needs are, why are they in these programs, and how can we continue to meet their needs if we have to consider reducing staff? So all of this is on the table for discussion.
So specific to my question, though, like, when you see a line under academic support that says intervention or a line that says TLC, that is a teacher doing that intervention, one person doing that throughout the day and one person doing TLC throughout the day? Okay.
Yeah, because that's essentially the class name.
Okay.
Like, substitute in there, honors English 10.
And the same applies for directed studies?
The directed studies, those are your study halls.
Oh, that's study halls, okay, got it. So those are pairs.
However, below the directed studies, you'll see that there's a yearbook course. We've been doing that as a class, not as an after-school activity, so that's something else that we can look at. And then the VHS.
What is VHS?
Virtual.
Virtual High School.
Oh, okay.
Essentially, one of our staff, for us to participate in the virtual high school, one of our staff has to teach a virtual high school course.
As a block.
Yep, so...
Yep, I understand that. And then there are other classes that are run on a semester-by-semester, like a half year gym. I think there are some health classes, those kind, are those reflected in here?
Yeah, you can see in some places where there's a notation S2, and there'd be a number.
Okay.
So in other words, so as an example, if you were to go to Unified Arts, scroll down that first column, there's an X/PE9. Well, the X means it's not, there's nothing running that block semester one, but semester two would be a PE9, and there would be 20 students in it.
Okay.
Is PE9 ninth grade?
Physed ninth, ninth grade.
Ninth grade gets their own physed?
So that's another thing that we're talking about, not having it be specified that it's a ninth-grade PE, and it would allow us more flexibility with the schedule if you didn't have to limit that block to just ninth graders.
Why does ninth grade get their own PE?
That's the way they've been doing it. It doesn't mean that we'll continue to do it that way.
Do any other grades get their own?
I don't believe that there are any other specifically designated PE by grade.
Okay.
You will notice, though, that the study halls are designated by grade. There's a freshman-sophomore study block, and there's a junior-senior study block.
It used to be that PE was done that way, and I don't know why they changed it, but...
I think what the, I think the intention is to try to get kids into meeting their requirements for graduation early, and when you sort of force the ninth grade to get at least one of their PEs in.
Yeah.
It's sort of assisting with credit management to successfully get to graduation, I think.
State requirement.
Mm-hmm. So again, this is just some of the data that we're looking at as we start to think about where we can make cuts. And I mean, based on class sizes, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you that I'm not recommending that you consider cuts at the K5 level that would put class sizes up over 25 if it is at all possible not to do it. That's where the foundational skills are built, and that if we can provide good, solid foundational skills in reading, writing, and math at those early grades, we have a lot less gaps to close. And they move up through the grades as stronger students. So I would not likely be coming to you with recommendations that, you know, class sizes at the first grade of 29 or 30 is okay.
Are we going to be adding a teacher to grade six for the bubble?
That's the number of sections that we need, but there are shifting needs in the number of classes for seventh and eighth grade as well. It's possible that within the staff... It's possible that within the staff existing at the middle school, you can just reassign grade level to some people.
Just have them move up with the class.
I'm just curious how that's gonna work, because...
Yep, so we're looking at all that, yep. But it's not, it's not as if we're looking at, okay, whoever was the sixth, fifth-grade teacher is now moving up to high school, uh, middle school. We don't, we don't work that way. There are different levels of licensure, there's content area licensure.
I didn't think that, no adjustment, are we shifting things around?
But, but there will be a need for more teachers at the sixth grade next year, but lesser need for seventh and eighth grade next year.
Do we have classroom, we have classroom space for that, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Well, my comment would be, thank you for all this information. And this whole business is extraordinarily difficult for everybody and nobody wants to see all of this come to fruition. We're crossing our fingers on health insurance, but
Right.
it, it's not going to be pretty regardless of where things land. And I appreciate transparency on the high school class sizes because obviously I would agree that the little guys can't be in classes over 25. So those cuts have to come from somewhere.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the, the conversations that we've been having this early, we're having, we're providing more information than we typically do this early on because we have challenges ahead. That said, this is the gap we think is in the ballpark of worst-case scenario. There's always the possibility that the health insurance won't come in at 10% and maybe it comes in at the lower end of what we've told is the likely range. Maybe it is at 8%. Maybe we get more than 2.5% increase from the town manager, right? There are a lot of things that we just don't know. But we, we think we've put together what, what is generally in the realm of sort of the worst case of what we're looking at, having to manage.
I also want to point out, we've been talking about teaching staff here, but you have said that the, any cuts that would happen would be shared throughout everybody, not just teaching staff.
We are looking at and intend to bring forward cuts that would be, I'm not going to say equitable across the board because nothing is ever going to be completely equitable, but there is no employee category that we're saying, nope, that's totally off limits. With the exception of our food service staff, because that's a self-sustaining program, they're not funded at all out of our local budget. So there won't be any cuts to food service staff.
We gotta have lunch.
It, it's not part of the local budget. So that is the only caveat. We will be looking at and have been looking at and talking about secretarial staff, custodial staff, paraprofessionals, classroom teachers, special education teachers, special education service providers, administrators. We, there's no category of employee that is off the table with the exception of the food service staff.
So for the mental health caseload, which I really appreciate that information, especially because I think that coming, right, coming out of COVID with the ESSR money, we thought that the, the increased mental health caseload would ease up.
It's not going to.
It hasn't, which I don't know if people at home, it has not eased up. There is a mental health crisis going on with many of the students. Could you, for this information, like, later, could you update it to show how many social workers and psychologists we have at each school handling?
Right now, there's one social worker at each school.
Okay.
And that's the caseload that you're looking at.
Do they share, do they move between schools or it's just one dedicated?
One per building.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so this is the caseload of, wow. Oh, wow, okay then. Oh, wow.
And again, we're looking at the data to try to figure out what needs still exist and how, how can we make cuts and still at least service to some level the need? We're, we're not going to be able to service to the same level our social, emotional, mental health need and our academic need compared to what we're doing right now. We're, we're not going to be able to. That said, we need to provide some level of support for students in mental health and in the academic realm. We're, we're really looking at this to try to figure out what kind of staff to hang on to in order to best meet the needs that we know we are going to continue to have. But I, there is absolutely no way to continue to provide the same level of academic intervention supports and social, emotional, mental health intervention supports like we have been doing. We're, we're not going to be able to.
Okay then, on that.
Happy note?
Light note, we'll, we'll move along. We will, this is not the last time we will be discussing this for certain.
Correct.
Next, we have reports. Does anyone have committee reports? Mr. Schoenbrink?
So I attended the PTO meeting last, I'm looking back at my notes, we have five pages of notes for today. I, I attended the PTO meeting on the fourth and the first thing that we did was Officer McNamara was there along with the beloved Hank and he gave us a walkthrough on Safer Watch. Mr. Santru was there and he also gave input on how it would be rolled out to staff at students. I downloaded Safer Watch and turned it out for the first time. It was very intuitive and we did learn that while they call it anonymous, it is not actually anonymous reporting, so just be aware of that. Somebody asked him basically.
Well, in the case that we suspect that there's abuse.
Correct.
In other words, somebody is filing false claims repeatedly.
This was like...
We can, we can then
Yeah.
put in a request to get some information relative to where this is coming from.
Everybody wanted to know the answer to this and so it took a while, but we got there.
But it is not, it is generally speaking anonymous. We would have to put in some effort to pursue information.
The other thing that they talked about was the craft project that's this weekend. I believe it's from nine to two.
Yep.
Uh, that is, they're also talking about the, the special someone dance and that is going to be broken into two dances because there was such overwhelming demand last time. Like, if you were a ticket scalper, you missed, you missed your call because they had a lot of, a lot of people that needed tickets.
That was an experience last year.
Uh, they also had money raised from the Trolls movie. It was, it did well, they sold out, but it was not as popular as Mario. And then the, they fixed the date for the two-day special someone event. It's February 3rd or if it's snow, February 10th. And then they are doing something different than this year and they are seeking sponsors for the dance and they have had some good success. So hopefully the dance will raise as much money as it did last year, plus the sponsorships.
Nice. Dance going to be in two places or is it going to be just two different dates?
No, no, it's gonna be, it's gonna be two different times on the same day.
Oh.
Yeah, so it apparently got pretty wild last year.
I heard it, yeah.
And, uh, it was like...
The event of the year.
A lot of kids and it, they had, uh, they ran out of Gatorade, so the kids are well-fueled. Then they had a dispute about colors of Gatorade. So they're trying to alleviate that by having
No Gatorade.
Two di-
Need a sponsor from Gatorade.
Yeah, no kidding. So they're gonna have two different dances. I think the plan is to break them up based on age, so like, little guys and then older kids. But that, that's the plan and hopefully it will be as fun but a little bit more organized because it really did tax the PTO last year. They just had so much stuff going on, so.
Awesome, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Leighton? Yeah, Finance Committee met November 30th. Chris Menard brought up capital planning, gave some updates. He also mentioned that we've really, the TASD town, we've rallied around parks, now we gotta really rally around buildings and which fixes and when and how. Tom Gray also mentioned that the warrant from the Building Committee was likely passed over due to the late night. That, that was likely the reasoning of why they passed it over, because it was already late. That's what his thought was. The town manager talked about funding. She had mentioned the funding because there was a lot of discussion about whether things should be in the operating budget versus capital, capital planning, like police cars or bulletproof vests and things like that. Some of the people thought it should be just in their operating budget, but the town manager also had concerns about that. It would increase budgets and not allow other departments money potentially too. So that was one concern that was brought up. It allows more flexibility. The Treasurer plans on attending next week, which is 12/7, December 7th tomorrow. They're also planning to meet January 11th. They're gonna take the rest of December off. They discussed bank accounts and there's different rates of interest, different institutions on different funds. And they'll have that discussion with the Treasurer. And there's apparently three buckets of municipal funds. They had talked about that briefly. The Town Manager mentioned the third quarter preliminary bid, preliminary bill would be the same as one and two and then one tax bill for the fourth quarter, expected higher because it was spread out over two. It's usually spread out over two, but now this would just be one bill. And then they mentioned Green Communities, to reach out to them, the, just to try to avoid Green Communities frustration with all the projects that don't go through Green Communities. A lot of the discussion was, well, once it's at capital planning, it's kind of already too late. So they brought up how capital planning is doing the, the 10-year capital plan and maybe each department could really reach out to Green Communities with their 10-year plan. That way, Green Communities could actually get ahead of it and start working with departments better. I thought even thinking of that too, that we could even send a letter to Green Communities about our future projects, 10-year plan and...
So just a little side information there. Mr. Heavy has already reached out to the folks at the state with the Green Communities grant to find out what kinds of things would be eligible. And he talked with them about pretty much all of the projects that are on our 10-year plan. And the only thing that might possibly be allowable would be the mini splits if we were gonna use them for heat, not for AC. Boilers, nope.
Could we not?
Windows, nope.
Could we not use them for AC at all?
I'm sure that we could use them for AC if we had them for heat.
We have to like promise not to use them.
Which is a possibility if you, if you think about the conversations we had around the Turkey Hill Facility Improvement Plan. We were talking about using them for heat there, so maybe there's something there. But I just wanted to let you know that Mr. Heavy is doing his due diligence. He's reaching out to find out what sorts of things are allowable and what he has learned is that pretty much everything that's, that's on our capital plan would not be a fit for the parameters for Green Communities, unfortunately.
Thank you to him for reaching out and looking into that, though.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that he did that, too.
Are you or him gonna reach out to Green Communities?
Tell them that?
I'm sure that, I'm sure that once we hear when the next meeting is, we will go and have those, we'll relay that information, Mr. Heavy's conversations with the folks at Green Communities at the state.
I think it's important that we establish regular communication with that committee and attend their meetings periodically.
Was that it, Mr. Leighton?
Yes, thank you.
All right, yes?
Uh, so the Athletic Advisory Committee met last Monday, the 27th, and approved two fundraisers, one for ice hockey. They'll be selling advertising for their alumni game program, which will be distributed at their game on the 5th of January and subsequent home games. And the basketball teams, both boys and girls, will be selling raffle calendars. I believe they've already started, drawing to be held throughout the month of January. We also got a presentation by a woman by the name of Caitlin Germain. She is the Athletic Director for Notre Dame Academy, which is a private school in Worcester, about a new fundraising idea that is circulating that's different from the traditional fundraisers that we've used in the past. It involves an app and sponsorships from local businesses, similar to like how the gold cards have worked in the past, but a percentage of business revenues for folks who are using their credit cards or debit cards that are registered going to the Booster Club or whatever the, the sponsored activity is. So there's some interest in pursuing that conversation and further circulating it with other boosters who are not present. And I'm gonna try to facilitate that over the coming months. Capital Planning has obviously met, we beat that one to death. And the High School Advisory Committee is meeting tomorrow at 3:00 PM and I am unable to attend. I did request a meeting separate with Mr. Santry, but if anybody else would care to attend that meeting in my stead at 3:00 PM tomorrow, there's a seat available.
Yeah, I don't think I can.
Okay, but I will, I will meet with Mr. Santry separately.
Ms. Laura?
Okay, PacCell met by Zoom on November 16th. We talked about, there is a new IEP coming out next year, which is going to be pretty different than the current IEP, significantly longer. Significantly longer, a lot more in-depth, but more voice of the student-driven with more input from parents and voice of the students. So they're going to be having training and introductions for parents and staff and citizens about what the new IEP will entail. And so details on that are gonna come out later, but they are gonna keep us informed and let us know and they were doing training on that as well. So look forward to that. They are much longer. You can get four free at-home COVID-19 tests this fall on covidtest.gov. And we are updating our bylaws, so that's gonna be happening starting at the next meeting, updating bylaws.
Okay. Before I go, go through mine, one question, Brian, back to you. The Municipal Building Committee, do they have a meeting scheduled?
I have not, I've, we missed the date that I would have liked to have a meeting, but we didn't have a meeting, so I'm still waiting for the next.
Okay, all right. The Master Planning Committee has not met since we have. The Middle School Council met on Tuesday. There was a general budget discussion and then a discussion about the middle school guidance position that hasn't been filled, but there is a substitute that has significant training and so that substitute is filling in to help students to point them into the direction they need to go to within the building to find help. They are taking the NEAP assessments, the National Assessments, on January 30th. 58th grade students will be taking them. They will be given math or English, English ELA, but not both. The D.C. TRIP registration is open. There is financial aid for students built into the price. And I, I didn't get the whole of this, but the part of it was that there's a five-year grant dealing with screenings for substance abuse and mental health and...
Through Mass General.
Through Mass General. Yeah, there was an acronym and I didn't catch it.
ESPT, the screenings and the survey. ESPT, the screenings and the surveys and so on and so forth. It's a new program, this partnership with Mass General. There was a presentation for the combined middle high school staff earlier this week. And I've already talked with Mr. Santry about a future presentation a few months down the road as we see how this is all working, this partnership with them.
He said that trained coaches would be into work with students a couple of days weekly. The question I didn't ask him that I thought was probably evident, but I should have asked at the time, I assume that parents have to sign off on this?
Relative to the check-ins, you mean, with the coaches?
Relative to the screenings? Or do they sign, you know?
So there are some surveys that they'll do with students to gather some information about how they're feeling about the program.
Okay.
But the screenings are, they are screenings that we will have to do. I can circle back around, but I would imagine that there would be a written opt-out if parents did not want their child to participate, as we've done in prior situations with the universal screenings that we've done.
That's what I thought, you know, and I forgot to ask. When I got home, I said I should have asked that. And the last conversation was about how hard it is for students to need to make hard choices between going to jazz band in the afternoon and basketball. It's hard at middle school because you begin to get those choices. You know, everything isn't laid out that you can do everything because the world isn't like that. And we all just agree that that's very hard. But there's no answers to that. It is just what it is. So that's what I had for reports. Is there any additional public comment?
Sorry.
Long wait for that, huh?
Oh, man. No, I'm sorry. It was really hard to keep my mouth shut that whole meeting, too, I gotta say. There's so much, I couldn't contribute it. Hi, Mary Foyle, 985 Flat Hill Road. I'm actually here wearing a few different hats. I had no intention of speaking either, but as the conversation went on, I looked at my notes. So, starting with the teacher hat, I, in the past few years at the high school, maybe six or seven years, have actually been in three different departments with the classes that I've taught. So I've got a pretty good range and I also have some of the smallest class sizes I've ever had in my career. And so I would say, so that my administrators don't kill me, I welcome you into my classroom anytime to see what high school life is like. I wish I had a bigger year because that would have been a very different story. I've sent the past three years having some of the highest numbers in our school as far as students go. And so to Mr. Beardmore's point of, you know, we did, the school committee made the decision to not regionalize years ago. I stood here and said something about that decision and asked for them to support the schools, which does mean in some classes, lower numbers. So we agree with that, though I do, I ponder this a lot, effectiveness versus efficiency. I think anything that I can do effectively as a teacher is not efficient. My best, like conferencing is not efficient. It is the most effective way to get work out of students. So there's that balance in there, too. All right, I'm going to switch hats. Union hat on, I'm our LEA president as well. And we're working on negotiation things on our end. We would ask, I was texting the board back there, and we would ask, we look at flexibility on times. 7:00 PM on one night is just very difficult for us to get our stuff together as well and also really late for some really serious conversations. So we'd ask for some flexibility and maybe a little more consideration in that. All right, my next hat is a class advisor. The class of '05, I advised, so that was one of that way back ago. And a kid reached out to me, a kid, what, they're probably 37 now, but reached out to me and said, hey, I think we have money in the account, we saw this article. And so I wrote back and I was like, okay, like if it's $200, whatever, just donate. I'd have to see what the other officer's like. Fine. So I went down to the office this week. They actually have $1,000, over $1,000 in their account. It's a bit different. And then I got this whole spiel about how it's actually not very easy to get that money. Something like an IEN number and you've got to go to Town Hall. And then there's something with the bank account so that you're not the one accruing the taxes. So there is a process that might take time for people. So I'm happy to see how that went and just caution, even if you're trying to get your ducks in the row, there's a time commitment to that. All right, back to my teacher hat now, too. So I do appreciate in what we're looking at and where that money is going. I did hear a comment about specifically for funding foreign travel, like travel to other countries. I would ask, and maybe something like this exists and we've just avoided field trips for a while, but we've always had department discussions of how do we cover field trip costs for those students who aren't free and reduce lunch, which we don't actually know how many of our students are on those lists. We don't have access to that information. And in the past, it's been a, oh, just add it on to the trip costs for the others, which really isn't the answer either. So I would think considering a broader use of just maybe abroad trips or those really expensive trips too that are going to eat away at the money, more students might get benefits if we have a broader range. Okay, that's it. That's pretty concise, too. Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you very much. That was quick.
That's a lot of hats.
A few thoughts. Another note relative to field trips and funding with the donations. You might have heard me say that the primary school is putting it into an account that will help to defray and cover costs for field trips across the board. So I do think that there are opportunities that when there are, like the donation that came in for the high school today, there might be opportunities for them to put them into those types of accounts for the field trips that we're talking about as more local field trips. And I will say, relative to the process that's involved, we've only recently learned that, and it isn't everybody, but apparently some banks, if you choose to go to a certain bank to open your account so that you can receive these monies and deposit them, some banks are requiring an awful lot be done in order to open the account and receive the monies. So that's nothing that we're doing, you're doing by policy. That is really a requirement of a specific bank. So it might be worthwhile for some students to explore other banks as options that may not require as much being done in order to open the account and accept that money. So we are advising folks when they've reached out to us that this is what we're hearing, that some banks are requesting, so that folks can kind of line things up and anticipate just in case they are asked for all of this, that they're ready for that. So we're doing the best we can to support folks as they're trying to transition the funds. But this was news to us recently as well. Thank you to the student that reached out to us and said, they're making us do all of this because that's not the standard experience, but it's helpful for us to know some of the things that they're being asked to do.
You have a new person opening an account in a new bank. There are now federal regulations called Know Your Customer Regulations that have to do with money laundering. That are not like, everybody has to do this, this, and this. They're very risk-driven and algorithmically oriented. So it's almost impossible to put your finger on, you're going to have to do exactly this to open an account.
Exactly.
But you're going to run into these hurdles.
One of the things that I guess somebody was asked for were the bylaws because it's coming from a nonprofit entity, the school department. There are no bylaws. So back and forth and so on, it's policy. So, and we also, at our office, have been engaging Karen Broschew in conversation about what the kids are being asked to be able to do. So just know that we are doing our best to support, everybody is there attempting to navigate a rather complex, what used to be so simple, just open a bank account. A very complicated process at this point, so we're helping as best we can.
Okay. Topics for future.
I had a public comment.
I'm sorry. See, I remembered to do public comment, that was good.
No, I just wanted to throw out there that I saw an article in the Gardner News. It was about the Murdoch Middle High School. They had a boiler explosion Thanksgiving and they had to move, relocate different students to different buildings and change school hours. And it was just an informative article. Just thought of like all the discussions we were talking about with Turkey Hill and they're trying to come up with a solution. So I thought it was an interesting article.
Where did that happen?
Murdoch High School.
In.
It's Winchington.
Winchton, yeah. Okay.
It exploded?
Yeah. Goodness. Oh, yeah. Nothing too big, I guess.
That's not good. So topics for future discussion, I think we have a truckload there.
And I've made some notes on my master planning.
I thought you probably had. And we are still planning on meeting in two weeks.
Yep.
Yep. Last year, we skipped the one right before Christmas, but I think we have enough on our plate right now. I would think we should, yes.
I took a note of just whether we should have a discussion about whether we should have a liaison for green communities or not.
Oh, yeah.
Wanted to add that to a discussion.
Yeah. If somebody is able to do that, that would be helpful. Or perhaps Mr. Heavy is doing that to a certain extent.
And he could report back to us.
Be a good part of discussion. Okay. If there is nothing else, then we would adjourn to executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto. Could I have a motion to do that?
Motion to enter executive session and then adjourn after.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty.